Wheat beans and wheaties, macaroni cheese.
That I go somewhere.
Yeah, exactly.
I don't go to where I'm based.
Yeah.
He was doing a call with us this morning. It kind of looked like he was in a plane, right?
Yeah.
So I'm not sure.
I think he did one graduation.
Might be. I feel more sorry for her than me because she's.
Their super dad used to be in a nursing home, so it's too stubborn to go.
Everybody's house.
Yeah.
Me too.
Lincoln.
Yeah.
So thank goodness they're being a long ways away, but.
I don't know.
Well, yeah, but she had a bout with kidney cancer, so they took one kidney out or took her kidney or her bladder out. I don't want to be eighty-five.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Flat City Council meeting here on Tuesday, October twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five, five thirty P M. Of course, we're here in the city council chambers, calling the meeting officially to order over invocation by Reverend Jonathan Sorensen, the Saint Ca- uh, Saint Patrick Catholic Church, please.
O God, whose almighty power is shown above all in pardoning and in showing mercy. May the authority that you have entrusted to us in government be exercised with compassion and love for all who live in this city and nation. Let your divine wisdom guide the decisions of the North Platt City Council, and may it shine through their actions. We entrust all people to your boundless mercy that through self-governance, they also may share in your power and lead their lives and families in accordance with your holy will. Grant us unity and the peace that only you can give, and after the blessings of this life, welcome us into the joy of eternal life. We ask this through Christ our Lord.
Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, in the name of our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Angie, the roll call, please.
Here.
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 Eric.
Here.
Later.
Here.
Here.
Here. Thank you. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act of the State of Nebraska is posted on the wall at the back of the council chambers. Meeting procedure: The public may address specific agenda items at the pleasure of the mayor. If recognized by the mayor, please identify yourself by stating your name and your address. Please address the council through the mayor and limit your remarks. We respect our city employees and request that any complaints or criticisms of employees not be aired in a public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator or the mayor. Individuals in violation will be declared out of order. Consent agenda: All matters under the consent agenda are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Any city council member may however remove an item from consent by request. One A: Approve the minutes of October seventh and fourteen, two thousand and twenty-five. B: Place on file treasurer's report of for August two thousand and twenty-five. C: Approve the application by TBS Liquors, N P L L C, D B A, The Bottle Shop, for a special designated license on November seventh, two thousand and twenty-five, from five P M to seven P M at Equitable Bank at nine twenty South Jeffers for business after hours. D: Send the application of Payco's League Baseball L L C, D B A, North Platt Eighties, for a Class C liquor license on and off sale located at one twenty West Eighteenth Street to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission with no recommendation. E: Authorize the mayor, excuse me, authorize and approve the renewal of a one-year interlocal agreement with network services between the city of North Platt and Lincoln County. Item F: Authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents regarding a twelve-month agreement for human serv- uh, excuse me, human resource services for Zell. G: Approve the mayor's appointment of Tony Miller as manager of utilities.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Motion by Rieker, second by Vols. Calling the question on the consent agenda. Consent agenda is passed. Item number two. Approve the mayor's appointment of Megan Trevino to the North Platt Board of Health.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the mayor's appointment of Megan Trevino to the North Platt Board of Health.
Okay. Motion by Vols, second by Dai. There's a little background here. Of course, reviewing some ordinances, we came across the fact that we're supposed to have a, as a city, a board of health meeting annually. Um, so, and that requires a member of the general public, and so I asked Megan Trevino if she would be willing to join, and, and she was. And so that's how we got to this point. So, yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, what, what does the Board of Health do?
Well, not a lot because they don't meet very much. It's something that can be, can be enacted for decisions around, um, sort of drastic health situations. So typically you might think of something occurring like in the case of a pandemic or, you know, or something like that. Um, but one of the things that they, they can do is if we have, um, really bad health situations in the city as a result of, um, living spaces and buildings and things like that, they can meet and, and attempt to provide solutions or provide resources or suggest resource, excuse me, they can't provide resources, but they can suggest resources for resolutions to those things. So.
Thank you.
Yep. Other questions? Calling a question on item number two, please. Item number two is passed. Thank you. Item number three, second reading in action on ordinance number four two two six to rezone certain land from an A-one transitional agricultural district to a B-two highway commercial district located at forty-six eighty-four and forty-six oh two Rodeo Road. Lay in the ordinance, please.
Ordinance number forty-two twenty-six, an ordinance of the city of North Platt, Lincoln County, Nebraska, rezoning certain lands described as part of the south half, north quarter of section twenty-five, township fourteen north, range thirty west of the six P M, Lincoln County, Nebraska, from an A-one transitional agricultural district to a B-two highway commercial district, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for the effective data and publication thereof.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt ordinance number four two two six to rezone certain land from A-one transitional agricultural district to a B-two highway commercial district located at four six eight four and four six zero two Rodeo Road on second reading.
Second.
Motion by Rieker, second by Nisley. Any discussion on item number three? Seeing none, calling the question on item number three, please. Item number three is passed. Item number four, adopt the resolution approving the placement of stop signs at Buffalo Bill Avenue and Philip Avenue for northbound and southbound traffic.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt the resolution to approve the placement of stop signs at Buffalo Bill Avenue and Philip Avenue for northbound and southbound traffic.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Vols, second by Flanders, and perhaps others. Thank you. Okay. A variety of information on this one for the council to hear. This is, other than the request for a target in various restaurants in our community, this is one of the things that I have heard the most about in the time of five or so years I've been the mayor, is people feeling like this corner is not safe for a variety of reasons. And so that's why this, this, um, item is on the agenda tonight. It's for the council to discuss and possibly to decide to do something about. Um, we had various experts out here who are going to make comments about it, and I want everybody to, you know, evaluate those comments and take them all seriously and then make a decision about what we do, because once we make a decision, we may not choose to talk about it anymore after that. So, um, that being said, Brent is going to talk about the engineering perspective of this item.
Um, good evening, Mayor, Council. Um, what we have before you is what the mayor read in the resolution. It was a proposed stop sign on north and southbound on Buffalo at the intersection of Philip. And we've had quite a bit of, you know, comments over the years on this as well. And this corridor has been studied quite a bit, going back to the thought of having the Buffalo Bill viaduct over stayed in. So there's been a lot of background study on this. From a traffic count standpoint, we have about three traffic studies as far as counts go from two thousand and fourteen, twenty-one, twenty-three. So we have some pretty good background data. The other part is city staff keeps track of all accidents that happen in the city that's reported that we have information on. So we have it for every location within the community, and then we keep it by year and by location. So we track that part of, um, traffic movement. And so when you're looking at the, there's a tension with traffic between getting from A to B and doing it safely. That's the, the tension, because everybody wants to get where they want to get as fast as possible, um, me included, and, but at the same time, we want to do it safely because we want to get there, not, not get there because of an accident or something happening. And so that's the balance that you're trying to look at, and the F H W A has a process for looking at all-way stops, and they have what's called the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices. It's done on a federal level, applied at each state, and the state makes modifications for it. And that's kind of the traffic bible, if you want to call it that, is how the process is looked at, whether it's two-way stop signs, four-way yields, or traffic lights. And I had one item that I thought I'd bring up. Um, when you're looking at the warrant process, that's kind of, if you want to say criteria, they use the word warrant, but its meaning is a stop sign warranted, and they have five different warrants that you can look at. And what they say is if any of those are met, you can't, you can have it, or you still might not choose to. Just because it's warranted doesn't mean that it's chosen, but that's a criteria to try to get it from subjective to objective on, when, when we're looking at traffic control. So what I did was I tried to summarize on this. This is the summary of what you guys have in your packet. So I thought I'd just kind of cover quickly the five bullet points on all-way traffic warrant. The first one is crashes. The second one is sight distance. The third one is transition to signal control or circular intersection. Fourth one, D, is eight-hour volume, including vehicles, pedestrians, bicycles. And then E, or the fifth one, is all-way stop control, other factors. It's to control left turn conflicts, intersection of two residential neighborhood collectors of similar design and operating characteristics, or if you have pedestrian or bicycle movements, and I think another one is, um, schools is another one that falls in those extras. So those are the five, if you want to say warrants or criteria, and so we went and looked through each of those five. And the first one is on a four-leg stop sign, or, um, there's or five or more reported crashes in the twelve-month period, or six or more in three years that were type susceptible to correction by a stop sign. So as of last week, when we looked at it, there was none in the prior twelve months, there was no crashes at that intersection for the prior twelve months. Sound like there might have been one today, of course.
They're my fault.
But it happened today, but prior to that, in the prior three years, there was eight reported. Um, but five of them were either rear-ending on Philip, um, alcohol. When you look at the eighth, there was one, maybe two, that a stop sign, there was a little bit of judgment, one for sure, two in three years that a stop sign, and I put that in your packet for information. The third one is a transition to signal control or to yield control. That doesn't really apply here at all. There's no construction or changing. So C, the third one, didn't apply. D, the eight-hour traffic volume, that's one that I think is a lot more, um, quantifiable with our traffic counts. That means that you're supposed to have three hundred car, at least three hundred cars at it an hour, north and south on Buffalo, and at least two hundred on Philip an hour for eight hours, any eight hours of the day. It has to be eight consecutive hours, any eight hours. We had that for two in the morning at a roughly eight o'clock, seven to eight, and then one in the evening. So it was based in the five o'clock timeframe. So we had two out of the eight. So that didn't hit that warrant. And then the other item was other factors. And the list that they had, we didn't have pedestrian concern from our counts that we had. And then the need to control left turn conflicts. And they're not quite the same as far as the types of streets. They're both busier streets. So when we looked at all five warrants or criteria, we didn't see that any of those five were met on, on our current traffic study. And we've had that corridor looked in the past and it was a similar conclusion in two thousand fifteen. And a consideration is Buffalo is significantly higher traffic many times of the day. When you get really disproportionate legs that the other times of the day, you can have issues from traffic studies. They found that if you have more than three times traffic volume on the larger leg, which would be Buffalo, you can have accidents because of a stop sign. So that's some of the balance in the big picture. Another piece. I was wondering if maybe I should stop here and see if you guys have any questions, but did you want me to mention the corridor discussion that we've had or you want me to keep on going? I don't want to overload everybody and then have.
Let's see if there are any questions so far and then we have any questions so far. Keep going.
Okay. The other thing that we've looked at long-term is with traffic, it's a network and it's kind of literally the neck bones connected to the backbone. Everything's, there's a ripple that happens when you make a change somewhere and what does that look like? A and Buffalo has significantly more traffic than Philip. And there's a lot of development going on further west with the apartments that are at A and Lakeview and also the houses that are across from Eisenhower, the triplexes duplexes. So that area right now is under some significant change in that area. And when we've looked at A Street, it had been, when you look at the warrant analysis for a traffic light, A and Buffalo has been right on the edge. And what we've seen recently is it's kind of tipped over that edge as far as it would warrant a, it meets the criteria for a traffic light. Now, just because it meets it doesn't mean you have to do it because sometimes you can function better without depending on traffic tech, technology and things like that. So looking at the whole corridor, we've talked about, Lane and I've talked about for the last couple of years, considering a traffic study of the Buffalo corridor as a whole. And then what changes, if we looked at some changes on A and Buffalo, how would that impact the whole network, maybe including Buffalo and Philip? And then do it as a, we, we looked at as a holistic approach. Because there are those two hours that we've seen, I think many of everyone in here experienced it is not, it's not a good time, those, you know, couple hours a day. But the other side is we have other intersections that are similar. But Mr. Garrett?
So I, did I just hear you that A and Buffalo does qualify for a light if we were to so choose? Because one of, one of my concerns is with the, the stop signs. Now, this is only a problem, you know, two times a day, five days a week essentially. But what happens with a four-way stop sign is you space out all your cars because everybody go, uh, they go alternating. And then turning on to it with your cars evenly spaced out becomes a nightmare and that becomes like constant based on how a four-way stop works. A light bunches all the cars together and they move as a unit and it makes it a lot easier to get on and out because you get bigger gaps in between there. If you don't mind rabbit railing, just a hair, what do you, how do you do the light pollution with a, a light in, in like a residential area like A and Buffalo?
What do you mean light pollution? What do you think?
There's houses right there and you put a stoplight right, right next to somebody's house. How did, how do you manage that and make it so they're not complaining all the time?
That's a good question. I mean, they usually have the shroud housing on those and some of the newer ones, there's a little bit more technology as far as trying to keep it more directional. LEDs are a lot more directional versus some of the older incandescence there. You know, they go every which way. So some of the lens technology with the light itself does, I mean, those are the things that can help. It doesn't eliminate all of it because now you have something there that wasn't
Gotcha.
there. But in general, if, and some of it gets in, I mean, usually it's on the mast and it should be in the direction, you know, traffic. So it should be focusing on the traffic. But some of the older ones that, you know, come to mind when you think about in town, most of, a lot of those are more of the incandescent type of walls and lenses. So.
So I, I not to dwell on this too long, but I, I would be interested to see what kind of a, a more in-depth study to see what, what our options are for lights and you know, because I think we could clean up some of that other problems that we're running into also. So that's good to know. Thank you.
Brent, I thank you. I, I agree with, with Brad. I, I take that road every morning to go to Mass down at St. Elizabeth's and it's great when there's schools not in session. But when school's in session, uh, this, the, the traffic might be blocked three blocks north of the intersection. They're waiting for people to make the turns and, and get through the intersection at A and Buffalo.
A and Buffalo, okay, thanks.
And, and it, it seems like what Brad was saying, if, if, if there was a light there, it would alleviate some of the congestion on Philip and Buffalo because you're going to have a group of traffic that's going to go through, which would allow them to traffic to cross the intersection of Buffalo, whether they're going east or west.
And I, I agree that the traffic light will create a caravan with a bigger gap that you're not trying to navigate a smaller gap or guessing.
I, I, I would be, I think that would be a great improvement for A and Buffalo faction. Have we had many crashes there?
A has a lot more crashes. It does significantly. I mean, the two criteria that I've seen is the traffic count on the two-hour and the peak hour. And depending the tra, the crashes that we've seen, there's a little bit of an up and down, trying to figure out how sometimes is head scratcher that you have some and then you have none. But there's a significant amount at A in Buffalo.
Yeah, I, I, I would, I would like to have you take a look at that for sure. I think that would clear up some of the other issues.
Because there, there's other cross streets like E. There's some others that are not a lot better, but there's less traffic than Philip for sure.
I'm going to play devil's advocate a little bit because I think the majority of A and Buffalo traffic is self-induced because there is a four-way stop there. I lived out in Lakeview and I chose every day to take A Street because of the four-way stop. I didn't want to navigate Philip Street, to be perfectly honest. I think also in that area, you are having a lot of people take different arterials, i.e. Sunset, Leota, E Street, primarily those three to avoid Philip. And that's from the southwest portion of town. So I think if we put a four-way stop at Philip and Buffalo, your traffic study might go down some on A Street. I I've thought a lot about this and I've asked a lot of people in that area out of my own accord. And the people who I'm asking who, who live in that area either say the first question, just like mine was, I don't know. But then when they think about it and some people right around that corner, they're like, something has to be done there. You know, because, and, and it's people that live on Buffalo that are within a block of Philip that are like, I would love a four-way stop there. Not thinking that I don't know if that traffic would get backed up at those peak times of the day, you know, and, and today I went to my house and I took a ride around the block because I'm a block from there. And the, I saw two of North Platte's finest sitting there with a police car and I said, this is a sign. But I, I, I don't, something drove me to drive over there and there was an accident there. I don't know. It's, I'm really, really glad we're having the debate. I don't know what the answer is. But the bulk of the people down in that area think that a four-way stop. So what is the detriment of putting a four-way stop there? And, and testing it for a period of time as long as one prerequisite I would have is that we have sufficient signage, possibly even a blinking light as we're approaching. So we don't have another Newbury and Highway thirty incident there. Because I am concerned about rear-ending. And one other thing I'm going to add, the biggest complaint I've had about people that live along Buffalo is the speed and the truck traffic. So I think this would be an unintended consequence. That might be a good one. It might slow things down going along the Buffalo corridor because people are going at a pretty good speed, but with proper signage, maybe this could, this could aid in that problem that we have also. So a lot to think about, but what's your thoughts on that, Brent?
I guess. What would be your first question you want me to kind of?
The speed thing, the speed thing and, and then unintended consequences of, of trying this out for a for a period and see what it does to our, to our, to the situation there.
Well, one piece on the speed, um, the mayor and I had talked a little bit about, there's like a practical and there's a technical. From the manual and uniform traffic control devices, they're very, very strong on, you do not do stop signs for speed control.
I read that.
And it's, it's very strong on that because their job. I mean, that's part of it. The, the other thing is if you use it for that way, what they've found is if you put in stop signs in succession in series, that people will speed in between them or they will run them. Depending on the street, people, driving characteristics. So that's a component of it. The other piece is when you look at traffic legs, Buffalo runs two to three or more times the traffic north and south than Philip. So a maybe unintended con- consequence is the rear-ending that can happen. I mean, we, when I was looking at the traffic, they, on the accidents in three years, three of the accidents were rear ends on Philip at the stop signs that were there, people rear-ended people that were stopped. And just as a general note, I mean, it gets into the weeds a little bit, trying to analyze and figure out what's going on. Most of our accidents happen at signalized or controlled intersections. That's where preponderance of our accidents happen. If you go the one ways, it kind of makes sense. It has the most traffic. So you just increase the occurrences. But some of the bigger areas that we have are A and Buffalo, Francis and Willow. Some of those are there is we have some higher accidents. So a concern I would have is are we going to create more accidents on Buffalo and Philip than what we already have? That, I mean, part of it is a transition. But after a transition, just what I'm seeing in some of that area, I don't know if that'll change. But so I'm not a fan of using stop signs to control speed at all because that's by the book. And there's quite a bit of study on that. And this is a federal documentation that the states have used. So in that respect, I wouldn't go that direction at all with the focus of the thought. Um, when we've done longer term, we had Reeves had set up the radar unit on Buffalo. And the average speed I think we had was twenty-nine miles an hour. Most of the people, I think the eighty-fifth percentile was like thirty-one, thirty-two. So most people are going thirty-one, thirty-two. Now on the radar, we always get strange things. There's usually a triple-digit speed that shows up on almost anywhere that we've seen. And so just from that standpoint, now I don't know, you get into the chicken and the egg. When you see a radar sign, do you drive faster or slower? You go, oops, slam on the brake. And so that might artificially push it down or maybe some people don't care. I don't know. But so, I mean, that's, that would be, the other thing is if you put it in and then you remove it, I've heard, I, I visited with some traffic engineers and they said removing traffic control is really dicey. You have to be very, very careful because a lot of our driving is, we're creatures of habit. You're used to fill in the blank. And if you change it one way or the other, especially with traffic, then it becomes a safety issue. It's not just. So that would be my bigger concern, I guess, with that is more of the, the safety part. And then when you factor in the safety and not having the warrants, that just creates another level of concern, I guess, with me from just the liability side. Did that answer your, you had questions on the speed?
It did. Thank you.
Brent, I just want to say, every week, they have a son that goes to high school. I drive on there in the morning and there's a lot of traffic. But that four-way stop at A and Buffalo, it goes. I mean, it goes. I think a big problem we've got to address is left turns. What jams up traffic is somebody makes a left turn, they can't get through because, because of, uh, you know, that continuous flow of traffic. I mean, that is alleviated with the four-way stop. Because you go through rotation and they, they can get through. So because there's an Eisenhower, there's a high school, you know, they get people coming north and south, turning either way there. That's why I think it would be considered on, on, uh, on Philip, it may not be volume as much as, well, there is volume because there's a lot of volume early in the morning. It's going to be, that's my only comment. The four-way stop, I think it's better of a street.
At, with different traffic controllers, different scenarios that you're looking at. If you look at some really high, pick your intersection, Lincoln, Omaha, is an example, Ninth and O Street in Lincoln, a stop sign would not work at all there. It, it's an extreme example. So there's a point where I can look at it as a tool. Each tool has a band that works well. And and the one thing that does help with some of the traffic lights is some of the technology with traffic actuation that you can have it if there's a heavier direction that you can have it, you know, on or off. And Lane and I've talked about that in different areas, the current lights, that if we could have them more directional or if they're actuated, they would just stay green on Fourth Street, let's say, maybe it'd be green on Fourth Street. And then the side streets might activate it and it would allow traffic to move on the predominant direction more. So tho- those are some things that impact even like to your point, to your comment, how do those lights even function? So. So looking at the holistic part, that was one thing that we've discussed is on Buffalo. What would, you know, what would make some sense even on the lanes, you know, north of A, south of A? What would make sense for best traffic flow and at the intersection itself? And those all start interconnecting a little bit. To your point about the left turn creating a problem if you made a left turn lane? And how would that impact behavior? So.
The only comment is if you go down now to Philip and Lake Jeffers, you get between the streets, you don't have a left turn, you know, the light. And so people are jammed up in the left turn lane because they can't get through because of traffic coming from, from the west. I mean, that's been my observation is a lot of times people are sitting there through a cycle, light cycle, because they can't get a left turn through.
That happens at Leota and Francis sometimes, but it's usually Philip and Leota that that happens.
So I, I, I spoke to Ty this morning and he is extremely in favor of this stop sign. Uh, he's very disappointed. He couldn't be here to vote for it. But he brought up a, a, a comment that, that I think we should walk through. When you put a stop sign in, in Buffalo, I mean, for my entire life, that's been a throughway right there, changing the behavior so that people actually stop at there. How do you do that? Do you do flashing lights, signage, like what, walk me through how you change the behavior so that we're not getting people just blowing through that stop sign just because there have been so many decades of doing that?
What I've seen for the minimum is like an advanced warning, there's a stop ahead. It'd be similar to what the state did over at Newbury and Highway thirty. If you're somewhat familiar with when they put in the overpass, they put in the stop signs and then they had the flags on it. And there could be something with advanced warning of the lights. The other thing that's been talked about is you have law enforcement for the ramp up that are nearby, that makes people pay attention and you know, hopefully be a little more alert, but.
Because I, I'm, I'm thinking through driving down there, every single time I'm going to be like, oh, oh, and slam on my brakes trying to hit, make that stop sign because I'm just not used to it, you know, so doing some real thinking through so we don't have people T-boning because blow up the Philip and then you go thinking the other guy is going to stop. You know, just, just something that, that we should probably think through.
Adding to that, would there be a billboard sign that say December first going to be four-way stop or would the stop sign be in and just all of a sudden we're waiting to do that? Or would the stop sign be in and just all of a sudden, we're waiting to do that? Or how do they, as Brad's saying, would it be better to have the sign saying such and such date, we'll start having four way stop? Or did you go put the sign up in the morning and, and hope for the best?
That gets a little bit tricky because we, we've talked about how do you communicate without making the communication a distraction? So the, that would be something I would probably do a little bit more. We've, we've had, talked through and come up with some ideas. What I would say is we'd probably want to flush that out a little bit further. As far as how the implementation would go. But at a minimum, there'd be some advanced warning of stop ahead, some flags. Whether we can do a light or not, we could look at, you know, if it's a flashing red light to get people's attention. I mean, it'd be any or all of those. And then maybe having law enforcement, you know, nearby.
Cause I drive that three or four times a day. When you live on one end of town and your business is on the other, you drive. And I can just see people stopping and the people behind them not stopping. And I think it's gonna be a learning curve. I don't know what it's gonna be, but at first I was strictly against it, but more I think through, I think it's best that we put it there now is to wait.
Brent, do you take in consideration of the, what's, what could happen out at the corridor by Pals and everything else, commercial? I mean, that's gonna possibly increase the traffic and everything else. I think, I think we need to be proactive on this and Council McGarrett and Council Mo Recker, I think we need to do some sort of study to see if maybe A and Buffalo needs a traffic light or to get that, those vehicles moving in a unit. So they're not so spaced out at that Buffalo and Phillip. So I, I, I'm in favor of this to go with the stop sign, but I think we need to do more studies on, on the traffic flow there at A and Buffalo as well. So.
I guess to your question, um, one thing that we've talked about with the study was in prior, what we've done is we've looked at like Walker in Buffalo and then Phillip in Buffalo and A in Buffalo, and we could look a little bit more holistically yet, even consider like E. Cause I think you'd mentioned, you know, how are people driving? That is more of a, um, kind of a destination study that there's more involves of trying to figure out where are people coming from? And where are they going versus just counting that, because that gets more in detail and it helps. But it takes a little, it takes obviously more study, because you have to figure out where, trace kind of where the car is coming from and going. And that involves sometimes asking, you know, people, where are you going? Or following them and then they come and ask, why are you following them? But I mean, to try to figure out where they're coming from and going, the destination, it's a good part of the study. So I guess that was more of what we were looking at is more of a comprehensive corridor study. And if we had the recommendations, you know, we could ask the questions if we do a light, if we do a stop sign. And we had talked about it this year and go ahead.
We, we did budget and engineering budget enough money for one traffic study for the year. And so that would probably be the focus of the Buffalo corridor, probably from Rodeo Road down to at least Walker, if not down to State Farm.
Just for the record books. I, I, when I drive through that intersection, it's early in the morning and so there's not a traffic issue for me. But I, but everything that's been said about this, I think here today is valid. And, and the main reason that I wanted to have this discussion is just, is two reasons. I like to explore solutions, which it sounds like a study might be a good idea for a solution. Also, I want the people that have been talking to me about this for five years to know that I haven't been ignoring them. And that, that the, their city government does actually pay attention to what people say and we will actually consider things. And there are, so there are a number of issues that, that fall into that category. But this is one that I hear a shocking, a, a shocking number of times. And I, I don't mean I hear it daily, I don't hear it weekly, but I probably hear about it once a month. And, and that's, that's quite a bit for, based on other things I hear about. I only hear about Target about once every quarter, so. So I, I do think that's the main reason I put this on the agenda tonight is for this discussion. Uh, I think Brent and Lane have come up with a really good solution, which is maybe we should do a traffic study and then see where that lands. And so if, I mean, I don't want to stop the discussion, we can continue to discuss. But if somebody would like to consider just tabling this until the, until the traffic study is done and we can reconsider at that time. That would be a perfectly appropriate action.
I, I have one quick question before we do that, but I agree with what you're saying. What would be the timeframe and cost of a study? Cause I, I don't, the people, I'd like, I'm not opposed to a stop sign and that might solve the problem. But we could also do a study and then the study comes back and says, you guys shouldn't have done that. And then pulling it out, that's not an option. So, but what kind of timeframe and cost are we looking at?
And, and to your point, that would be my concern is doing that and then trying to undo it because there's a better solution. Or maybe a solution that gets the same result. The, the tension again is trying to get people from A to B quickly, but safely. And so, um, what we looked at the study wise were roughly in the twenty thousand dollar range. And what we had talked about was the traffic count. And I've been in contact with them. My thought is we'd probably have an answer back by the spring, maybe sooner. The one part with the traffic count, we have to be careful to get something that's representative. Like we purposely have done our traffic counts to miss June and let's say Christmas. We want to catch school is forward, we, we don't want to catch a low time. And the other side is we don't want to catch Nebraska line days during the concerts and the crazy amount of traffic. That's not representative either. So that's what we've looked at. And the other thing that's changed is camera technology and AI and traffic counting. You can get a lot more information, a lot quicker, a lot cheaper than having someone physically there. You can video it, upload it to AI, it tells you car, dog, person, truck. And tells you all their turning movements just with the video, so.
Well, I, I think that's fairly reasonable, so I, I would move to table at this time until the study is done.
Second.
Can I ask one more question on the study?
You can't ask after a table motion, but you can ask before we do the next item. So hold on just a second. At table say, so motion by Garrick, second by who seconded?
Recker.
Recker. Okay. Table until a study is complete, calling the question on that. Item is tabled, Rod will ask a general question.
Would the study go Buffalo Bill from the Viaduct all the way to State Farm? Or what area would it just do to the River Bridge? How far would the study go?
Well, go ahead.
I think we're looking at probably, as Brent said, kind of the whole corridor, but we'd be looking probably from Rodeo Road at that intersection. All the way at least to Walker, if not to State Farm.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Perfect, thank you.
Which being that length, it may be a little bit more, but I think when we're already starting it, it wouldn't be a lot more. It might make sense because of all the things that have been mentioned today with the development, the different things to do that entire corridor and look at that piece.
It would show the traffic going all the way to Rodeo Road and all the way to State Farm. Thank you.
Makes no sense. All right. Thank you for the discussion, everybody. Okay, item number five. You ready, Lane? First reading in action on ordinance number four, two, two, nine to amend section fifty four, ten. Excuse me, fifty four dot ten of the code of the city of North Platte relating to the collection of bulky trash.
Ordinance number forty two, twenty nine. An ordinance of the city of North Platte, Leaning County, Nebraska, to amend the code of the city of North Platte by revising chapter fifty four, section fifty four dot ten entitled, collection of bulky trash within title five, public works. To provide that this ordinance shall be made a part of the code of the city of North Platte, Nebraska, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith and providing for the effective date and publication thereof.
Mr. Mayor, I'm moved to adopt ordinance number four, two, two, nine to amend fifty four point one zero of the code of the city of North Platte on first reading.
Second. Motion by Recker, second by Vols. Okay, Lane, this is all you.
Um, basically in the last few years, we've, um, changed some of our collection process on bulky trash. Where before people had to call in or else take it themselves out to the transfer station. With our camera system, our Rubicon system, we're able to actually document bulky trash words that, um, what it is and the time. And so with our fee schedule, this would allow us, um, to be quicker at picking that up where they can use the camera system. They can take pictures, pick it up, charge the customer and, and go on. So that's, uh, and it's kind of, um, making some of the definitions a little more easy to understand. So Bill, I don't know if there's any more you want to add to that?
Yeah. My involvement here was really just kind of taking what the public service department provided to me and, and putting it into kind of a user friendly method for the, for the city code. So I didn't have a lot of input in it. I just met with public service department and, and tried to craft something that would be, um, easy for the public to understand. So.
And I'd say items C and D under there, where it talks about the right away in the alley, which, you know, anything in the alley, being in the public right away, we consider to be, um, bulky trash or, or debris. It's something, someone's abandoned or put in there because it's in the, in the alley. And then just to be able to, for the feet of, for disposal to kind of shore that up.
I just have a question with regard to this bulky trash. Remember I had a structure I took down in the middle and thought, well, I'll just put it in the alley. You know, they get the dumpster divers, the guys that drive around and they'll, they'll pick that stuff up. You know, are you working with those guys, the private guys?
Some people take that chance if it would be picked up, you know, by them. Um, I put a shed out there and they did pick it up. And so then I called public service and I picked it up and I paid twenty bucks or whatever it was for it to be picked up. So, um, but we, yeah, we, we still work with those people because they, this doesn't exclude them from taking that, so to speak, but it's, uh.
Ed.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. A couple of things, Lane. One, you, you, you talk about one gallon containers of oil. I think most people that change your oil buy oil in a five quart container. And so are we restricting that specifically to one gallon? Because most of the time when I change my oil, it goes into a five quart container. So am I going to have to put it into a milk jug and?
That's what it's always been in the regulations, so we just didn't amend that. I mean, that'd be something, so, but I don't think, I, I think if the guy sees a jug of oil sitting there, they're picking it up.
The other thing I guess that comes to mind on oil. I, I, are you, are you, are you thinking about charging a pickup fee for the oil?
I don't believe we charge for the oil because we use that in our oil burner at the shop.
And, and that's, I, I was hoping not because right now you don't charge for it. And I'm afraid that if you start charging for it, some of it may be used to oil the alleys.
We don't want.
Right. I don't think that was the intention.
Okay.
I'm not well versed in this, so explain to me the process right now. From what I remember, someone has to go down to city hall, get a, get a sticker and then the truck will pick it up. And now you're just saying, you don't have to go down to city hall anymore if they'll take the picture and send a bill, is that right?
To answer your question, we started out with the sticker process. We had a lot of people just call in and say, hey, can you just pick it up? And so with our, with our system, they're able to log that in. And so the guys, when they get there, they can see that, hey, this person requested the pickup. So they don't have to take the extra trip to come down and get a sticker. This would allow, um, basically we, we, any of the places that we would just consider to be bulky trash. And so we would pick it up and then charge the customer whether they called in or not, which once in a while something may be stuck in the alley that wasn't meant to be picked up, but we can't have instructions in the alley either. So it's, it's not a perfect solution, but I think it's easier for the customers in most situations.
Okay, thank you. Ed.
So in that given situation, it, it seems like, I think it mentions washers and dryers and refrigerators and this and that. They're not going to put them in a regular garbage truck, I don't think.
We have a bulky, usually what they do is log where those are at. And then once a week we send out a bulky, the, the truck and trailer that'll pick those up. Yep, they take it, then they, the system actually lets them put in all the different addresses with like washers, dryer and stuff. And it gives them the best route to be most economical to get around town and pick them up. It's pretty slick.
So if we have somebody, me, maybe I have one dumpster and for some odd reason I've got a dumpster and a half of trash. And I set the other half on the ground. Presuming it doesn't get blown over to the neighbors and he picks it up. But nonetheless, um, is that, is that going to be considered bulky trash and an additional fee?
Yes.
Okay, I don't have a problem with that.
We, we'd rather not have that happen just because animals and things get into that. And so I think the fee on that is fairly steep to encourage, you know, it's four dollars for an extra can a month. To encourage getting an extra can instead of putting garbage on the ground, because that's the lot, we don't want garbage all over the place.
That's good.
Rod.
So for the people that don't have an alley and you live on a snow emergency route, we don't want them having a refrigerator or a washer and dryer setting on the street for, will they get it picked up in a timely manner? Is it gonna set there for two weeks?
It can set up there for two, up to two weeks, depending on the timing when the bulky.
Cause I'm sure there's more people than, that don't have alleys that have street pickup.
I, and I, I'd have to check the rates on a route. I think it's cheaper for you to take it out to the transfer station yourself than to get it picked up, but I'd have to double check that.
It's not that I've ever done it, but I'm just asking if somebody had that.
I haven't seen a lot of that go on, but good question.
Okay.
Depending on the circum, thank you, Mr. Mayor, depending on the circumstance, a lot of people may not have a, a access to a pickup truck to out there. So this is a service that they're going to be willing to pay.
And again, a lot of times the scrappers pick those up before they ever get to us and.
Other questions or comments on item number five? See none, calling the question on item number five, please. Item number five is passed. Okay, we have a series of public hearings. Uh, number one, or excuse me, number six, first public hearing. As, uh, we'll open shortly to approve the agreement, uh, for sale of real estate with the estate of Joanne J Riley for property on seven sixteen West Eighth Street and authorize mayor to sign all necessary documents. So opening the public hearing on this matter, anyone would like to make a comment, please approach the microphone, tell us who you are, where you live. We have our first speaker.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Eric Seacrest. I'm here at the request of Gary Pearson, the president of the North Platte Chamber in Development, who is ill. And he, he sent his second string speaker. It's not a secret, there are a large number of problem properties vacant and uninhabitable in this city. It happens for all sorts of circumstances. Yes, infirmities, poverty, other financial hardships. Often owners literally walk away from properties with problems. Heirs decline a bequest of a family property because it is more trouble than it's worth. Often old rundown properties become drug houses. Problem properties harm our neighborhoods, harm the people who live there. And here's the unfortunate, it is unfortunate, but here's the reality. Vacant and uninhabitable houses with limited market value rarely resolve themselves. Instead, they become a problem for the community. And municipalities across the country end up being the primary entity to deal with these kind of properties. Because municipalities have the legal duty to protect public health and safety, to deal with hazards and unlawful activities. To help deal with problems of problem properties and add needed housing, the city of North Platte received a rural community recovery grant in the amount of one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the state of Nebraska. It's been well documented that this community could use more housing existing and new residents. And the community also. And the community also could use more buildable lots. With public infrastructure to add housing. The city of North Platte and its residents have made substantial public investments in every house. Every house lot. In roads, electrical lines. Water pipes, sanitary sewers and storm sewers. This public investment in infrastructure is largely wasted. By homes that are vacant and uninhabitable. These municipal assets can be put back to more productive use if these properties are redeveloped. Also, each problem property in this town is a drain on city staff resources. Code enforcers, the building inspectors. Development Department, the city attorney. With revitalization funds from the rural community recovery grant, vacant and uninhabitable properties can be fixed and improved. And turn a liability into an asset. This process in front of you is voluntary. Voluntary. Put them there no no compulsion. It is visible. Through public hearings like tonight and action items at city council meetings. And it avoids other legal. Alternatives to deal with uninhabitable houses that are owners, time consuming and costly. It is totally proper and worth worthy that the city administration and the city council. Review each of these offers and the amount being proposed. For reasonableness. This grant support is likely a once in a lifetime opportunity for the North Platte. And in the words of city attorney Bill Trosinski, that he often uses, time is of the essence. The funding support from the for this grant. Has a deadline. Be used by September thirty twenty sixteen, twenty twenty six, excuse me, twenty twenty six. Less than a year. Time is in of the essence to use this grant support to benefit neighborhoods. And the entire North Platte community. Thank you for the offer, attorney.
Thank you. Public hearing is still open. Anyone else?
Good evening. Um, my name is Matt Peterson, uh, six fourteen Sequoia Court. Um, as I believe. You all know from your packets tonight, um, this property is um is currently owned by a state. Um, Joanne Riley. Um, I have been appointed special administrator of that estate, so I am in charge of trying to uh. Figure everything out with it. Uh, about three or four months ago, shortly after I was appointed. Um, I was escorted over to the property by some of your building inspectors from town. Uh, they were nice enough to join me for my first walkthrough of the property. Uh, when we first got there, uh, we actually couldn't even get in. We had the locks. The locks were changed. We were um. Eventually got access, um, but that got us into basically the screened in front porch of the property. Um, then there's another door that goes into the actual property. Um, one of the building inspectors actually had to essentially kick down the door. To even get it open. Um, the property is, we believe, has been vacant for probably the last four years. Ms. Riley died in twenty twenty. Uh, we don't know when the last time the utilities were on in the property. But it is essentially covered from floor to ceiling with miscellaneous junk. Um. It's hard to even walk through. There's feces on the floor. There's it's clear that there's animals living in there. Um, there's a couple of windows that are broken where it appears that animals have gotten in. Um, I actually went back over there today. Uh, we had secured it, locked the doors, um, and the front door was open. So um, I'm a little concerned there might also be um. Squatters in and out of the property. So um, that's just kind of a brief history of that. I'd be happy to answer any questions, but essentially. Um, if if you've driven by this, this property is in is in a nice area. There's a lot of nice homes around it. Um. Unfortunately, this property has become an eyesore. Um, we believe there might be a daughter of the decedent. Um, but I don't believe we've had any luck tracking her down. So um, this property is going to remain vacant. Um, unless something's done about it. I don't believe that it's it's something that would. Sell well on the open market. Um, that it would require way too much work for someone to go in and clean it up. Um, and so. I think um, it was a great, what Eric said was was great. I mean, this is a property where certainly um. I think it's going to be used for bad purposes unless something's done with it. So um, I'd be happy to answer any questions if anyone has any, but.
We reserve the right to call you back when we debate. Okay, Matt?
Sounds good.
Anyone else?
I'm going to do something unusual. My name's Todd Von Kampen and my address is seven fifteen. West Eight, which means I live directly across the street from this particular property. I have had nothing to do with uh this property being on your list at all. I simply wanted to make you aware that if you need to ask any question about what the property looks like from just having lived next door. I'm available for that purpose. So um, but it would be good to get it cleaned up for sure. It's very much overgrown. You can't even see inside it from just those few feet away on the opposite side of the street. So.
Thanks, Todd. We may call you back after the during the debate. So thank you. Anyone else like to make a comment on this one?
Motion to close a public hearing.
Second. Motion by Die second by Bowles to close the public hearing. Calling the question on closing the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. Council now consider approve the agreement of uh for sale of real estate with the estate of Joanne J Riley. For property at seven sixteen West Eighth Street and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agreement for sale of real estate with the estate of Joanne J Riley. And authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Second. Motion by Bowles, second by McNew. Okay, anybody have any thoughts or questions on this one? Brad, go ahead.
Can you come back up, Matt, if you wouldn't mind? Just a couple of quick questions for you. Uh, when did you say you took responsibility of this property?
I was appointed as special administrator.
Approximate is okay too.
Uh, roughly July, I think it was, June or July.
And you didn't, you haven't taken it to the open market at all or or?
I have not. Um, I, once I saw it originally, I mean, it. It would before I would even consider, I think, listing it with anybody or even advertising it. I mean, we would have to. Essentially go in and clean out the entire property. It's, I mean, I'm not joking when I say it's it's floor to ceiling covered in. I don't know if she was a hoarder or what it is, but it's it's everything that you can imagine.
So I I'm not opposed because it's this is reasonably priced and you know, this is kind of what this program is is intended for. Uh, my my only concern is that the bones of this structure could be great. You know, a house flipper could walk in and say, for thirty thousand. I'll drag everything out. This would be great. And we're removing that from our our section, from our our uh. Our populace and not giving it for the open people to to have a chance at this. So um, I'm probably not going to be against this one. But I do have a concern with with, you know, the fact that it wasn't even opened up to the public at all. So, thank you.
Go ahead. So um, if this property isn't purchased by the city, what's the normal process uh attorney takes for the next steps? To to get rid of the property. Um, how long does that process normally take? What's what's that consist of?
Um, so this, I mean, it's a pretty unique situation. This doesn't happen very often. Um, I I we we probably would look at. Getting a quote from someone to to clean it out. Um, I know, I think there's some companies that maybe do that. But my concern is that the the quote to clean it out would probably be more than we would ever be able to sell the property for. Um, and as Mr. Garrett said, the problem with with some of it is right now, we can't even tell how good the structure is. Because there's so much stuff in there that it's hard to even get a good analysis of how things are. Especially when we think though at least the last four years utilities haven't been on and things like that. There's obviously concerns about. Pipes and things along those lines. So so yeah, I mean, I I guess if 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 we don't, if it's not sold to the city, then. The next step would probably be trying to get someone in there to see what a quote would look like to to get it cleaned out and.
And and that's kind of what I was getting at is, you know, it's kind of a longer process to get rid of a a house like that. You got to spend a lot of money. You might not recoup in the process. A lot of things can happen with that property. It's not going to, you know, the trees aren't going to trim themselves. Squatters aren't going to go away. So basically, what the city's doing is just speeding up the process of cleaning that property up, saving attorneys time and money. So.
There's also, I forgot to mention this, there there's also some abandoned vehicles in the backyard. And so I actually um, received a letter from um. One of your compliance officers uh about that. So there's, I mean, there's a lot, not only in the house, but outside as well. So.
Yeah, just the only asset in the estate.
Uh, we did find some unclaimed property, um, a couple hundred dollars worth of unclaimed property with.
As far as you're concerned.
Correct.
The cash to clean up the property.
That that's correct. Yep, we would, we would be, I mean, yeah, we'd have to figure out a way to to pay for whatever. Would get hauled out of there before we'd be able to, yes, correct, have any cash to do that.
Great. This is either to Matt or Bill or Judy. Uh, first one wins. How long has this been on the property resolution hit list? Five hundred and twenty one days, five hundred and forty one days. There has been ample time for people to purchase this property. So that's my point there. So thank you.
But but the problem with the the property resolution list, it's not public anywhere. You you can walk in and ask for it. It is, it's available public, but you can't just go to a website and look it up. So. You have to physically go and and take some effort to go look for these properties. There's a lot of people in town that doesn't even know this this list exists. So. One of the things I I've met with the resolution team and we we discussed was putting this this uh list on a public. You know, available website somewhere uh does two things. One, it opens up a lot more opportunities for people to be aware. That these properties exist and and they might get more interest in them. And uh, two, there's a social motivation to not be on the list. If it's on a public available website. So something to consider. Um.
Ed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, this question isn't for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Matt, um, how do we arrive at the the amount of money that we're going to offer for a property? It it seems to me like that this is another one of those situations where we're going to be spending thirty thousand dollars. And and if we're lucky, we might get ten out of it. And that's not charging anything for the, that's not charging anything to the city for the cost of the cleaning. How do we arrive at what we're willing to pay them for the property?
Every property is different. So if if you want me to.
Go ahead.
So so every property is different. So uh generally with each property that we're looking at, we have a small group within the city. Uh, that consists of Kevin and Judy and myself, the mayor, Lane, Dave Hawn. Uh, we meet and we try when we have properties such as this. Um, to be honest, this particular one was kind of a head scratcher for us because uh as Mr. Peterson indicated. Uh, some of the building inspectors did accompany him to the home. There's the possibility that it it could be salvaged. Um, I will tell you, it's kind of an aside, this this particular property has consumed a. Significant amount of city staff time, uh, including my time. We have been working on this. Uh, for well over a year. Um, some of the things that Mr. Peterson talked about, trying to locate family members, that kind of thing. I've I've spent a significant amount of time trying to do some of those things. And so. Um, I say that because the building inspectors were involved and until Mr. Peterson was appointed. Uh, we had no way to access the interior of the building. So we were trying to look for ways. Uh, to get it onto the property list, to write it up. Um, and so we we were looking at the exterior of the building. As you can see from, I know the picture that we have. And from what's been said here today, the outside is pretty overgrown with vegetation and that kind of thing. But we're having a hard time finding things to write it up for based on the exterior. So the exterior seems to be in good, pretty good shape. So. To that point, um, we see things like that and we think this could potentially be a property. That someone, once it gets cleaned out, somebody could come in and and turn it around. Um, so that factors into our analysis as to what we feel like we can offer. Um, certainly we factored in the possibility that, you know, the estate, as Mr. Nisley touched on and Mr. Peterson stated. There's no funds to pay for anybody to come in and clean it up. So we factored in some of the cleanup costs based on some of the quotes that we've seen. From other places. Um, so we we tried to account for all of those things in in what we are willing to. Provide as kind of a starting point for these offers. And and that's how we came up with this amount. It's roughly twice the amount of the assessed value for the lot, uh, because we feel like there is some value in addition to just the lot there. So um, generally, that answers your question as to how we come up with the price. But more specifically with this particular uh piece of property, that's specifically how we came up with the price for it.
Well, it would seem to me like I I have been by the property looking at the at the pictures. Uh, it it apparently is quite a mess. Uh, and and I understand since you can't get inside of it, you couldn't make a real definitive decision on whether it's. Repairable or not. But it would seem like if we're going to buy it or even offer, we. Figure out what it's going to cost to clean it up and then put it on the market. You know, if it's going to cost fifteen thousand dollars to hire somebody to clean it up and haul everything out, trim the trees and put it back in. Halfway respectable looking order and put it on the market. We probably could do that for half of what we're offering them for. And there's probably no other offers for it. So the chances are the the owner would take that as a reasonable offer. Um, it just seems seems like we're offering more for the property than. And I understand the program's designed to lose money, which is a mystery to me, but nonetheless, um.
There's no guarantee that this one's money. So that's.
That's that's exactly right, Bill. That's exactly right.
What you want to reject here, you got neighbors out here living next to this property for a year and a half. And we're talking about. Let's get it done. You know, they're taxpayers. Their property is being affected by this. All I'm saying is that you don't, we're not after here after the highest and best dollar. That's not the issue. We have a responsibility to our constituents to provide with a healthy, safe. And you know, there's the the surroundings. And you know, I think you're we're ignoring that part of it. This property is a piece of trash. Nothing's going to get done unless we pass this, get it done and get things rolling. That's all I'm suggesting, guys. You know, this isn't the deal about making money. It's 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 doing the best for the citizens of this community. And keeping this property from not being sold is not doing the best for the citizens of this community. That's all I'm telling you. There's more than money involved in these things.
But but the issue is, it's only been on the market for since July, since Mr. Peterson.
It's been sitting the way it is for a year and a half.
But there's been no way to buy it since then.
Well, but that's why we're going through the process to get it done. You see, this process takes this long to get done.
I I understand that, but uh unless there's a an access for somebody else to get in there and buy it also. The city is dumping one point two million dollars into this market, which, as you guys know, has a potential to cause some inflationary problems.
I respectfully disagree. This is not an inflation issue. What are we going to do to our people out here? You want you want to tell Todd, we're not going to do anything about this? Just look at this junk for another year and a half?
I knew I shouldn't have said.
You know, you got to realize, I mean, that's what the real issue is, guys.
All right, guys. I.
People. It's not money, it's people.
All right, don't make me pick up my gavel, please. Okay, I appreciate everybody's comments. But the the way we resolve these things in America is we vote. It's that simple. Calling the question on item number six. Item number six is passed. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to item number seven, we have yet another exciting public hearing. And we will consider approve approving the agreement for sale, uh, or excuse me, we'll receive comments on the. Approve the agreement for sale of real estate with the owners of the property at nineteen oh two North Sheridan and authorize the mayor to sign. And we will consider approve, approving the agreement for sale, uh, or excuse me, we'll receive comments on the, uh, prove the agreement for sale of real estate with the owners of the property at nineteen oh two North Sheridan and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. Okay, we're opening up to public hearing. For comments on nineteen oh two North Sheridan.
Uh, Matt Peterson, six fourteen Sequoia Court, um, this is another one I'm, I'm somewhat involved with, um, I think again in your packet, there's some explanation. This property was previously owned by, uh, an individual. She passed away, her, her children, um, filed what's called a small estate affidavit, meaning there wasn't enough assets to open a full probate. So they just did a small estate affidavit, which is a convenient way to do things, but doesn't always create the cleanest title. Um, and so one of those, um, children passed away, um, leaving three surviving children. And the decedent's, um, interest, unfortunately, everything was owned a quarter interest by each of them. So in order for them to convey the property with clean title, um, we were able to get one of the children of the decedent, so a grandchild of the original owner, um, appointed as, uh, personal representative of that party's estate in order to clean up some of the title. So, um, this property is vacant. Um, I don't know a lot about the condition because I haven't been in there, but I do know it's vacant, um, and we now have clean, we now at least have a, an opportunity to present clean title, um, so it can be sold, uh, at that point. So, and I believe this is one where Mr. Shinsky can correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, this is one where I believe the estate can also be involved with some of this grant money. Um, we, we wouldn't have opened an estate if it weren't to try to get clean title. And so, um, again, I, I don't really know much about the condition, but I can answer if there's questions about, um, the process we went through or to try to get that cleaned up.
Thanks, Matt. We'll probably call you back up.
Yeah.
Okay. Anyone else have any comments? Nineteen oh two North Sheridan, going once, going twice.
I move to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Volz, second by Ricker to close the public hearing, calling the question on closing the public hearing, please. Thank you. Counsel will now consider approval, uh, approve the agreement of, for sale of real estate with the owners of the property at nineteen oh two North Sheridan and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
I move to approve the agreement for sale of real estate for a property located at nineteen oh two North Sheridan, North Platte, Lincoln County, Nebraska, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Second.
Motion by you, second by Flanders. Okay. Anybody have questions for Matt? Matt?
Same, same questions, same two questions. Uh, when did you take responsibility and, and did you put it on the market?
So this one's a little different because I'm, I just recently got appointed as, uh, or I, sorry, I just recently helped someone get appointed as personal representative of the estate. So I don't actually have any interest in this property. Um, this is one though, and, and I'm sure they can tell you how long it's been on the, the list, but, um, this is one where unfortunately some family members, uh, had kind of taken advantage of the situation, were essentially squatting in there. Um, so I did assist in, in getting them essentially evicted from the property. Um, so I believe it just, it fairly recently became vacant. Um, I can't answer any questions as far as what's been done to try to market it or anything like that. Um, and, and quite frankly, it probably, really until we got one of the, this grandson appointed as personal representative, they wouldn't have been able to do anything because there wouldn't have been a way to convey full interest, so.
Have you been inside the property?
I have not.
Okay. Has the inspector been, you been in there?
I, I haven't, no. I can, I can speak to that somewhat. Um, this, in to, to your initial question, uh, Councilman Garrick, uh, this property, um, came up when we were first awarded the, the grant. So we've been, again, this is one we've been working on for, uh, probably close to twelve months. Um, and in my initial discussion, so I, I initially, I was discussing with one of the owners, as Mr. Peterson stated, there are four owners, one of which is deceased, discussing with them. And they shared with me the concerns about the family members and that were living there and not paying anything, not paying taxes, not taking care of the property. We, uh, very shortly after that had, uh, the property written up by code enforcement for nuisance violations and took one of those property members into court where they pled guilty to a nuisance violation and paid a small fine. And, um, and so it's, it's been something that we've been dealing with kind of continuously for the past twelve months. But the family was really struggling with, how do they deal with this deceased property owner's interest? And they didn't have the other family members all on board with that. And so, um, really this is just one of those that creates a lot of, um, hurdles, I would say, maybe legally, that makes it difficult for somebody to just come in and purchase it. Um, in, uh, anticipating questions about this coming, the, um, the proposed purchase price is just what the family said that they would have to have to sell it. So if that came from them, that's what they were requesting and that's all they would consider, um, approached with whether they would wanna sell it.
So, so walk me through some potential problems with a private seller purchasing this.
All of the legal work that's involved, um, all the coordination between family members.
And you're doing that role essentially?
I have done a lot of it, yes, but Mr. Peterson has now taken on the bulk of that work. So I've, um, like I said, for about twelve months, I've been working on this one and telling them that they need to get something like this done. And so, um, maybe just my opinion, but a private seller's not gonna be that patient to wait around for, for that type of progress.
Gotcha.
And I don't know that the family would have gone through the process without the assistance of getting that started. I don't think they would have probably taken the initiative. I think it probably would have sat there.
Okay, so that we started with one point two million. Kevin, how much do we have left in the, in the grant? Do you know off the top of your head?
So we have, uh, approximately one hundred and seventy-three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars towards the grant and match, leaving us one point two seven one million with the grant and the match remaining.
So we have, we have one point two seven left?
We have.
Have access to?
Committed a hundred and ninety-five thousand matching funds.
Okay.
Which was part of the annual budget, approximately sixty, sixty-five thousand. So with the match in the amount we spent so far, we have one point two seven one million to use up by the end of.
One point two seven.
September of next year.
Would we start with one point four?
One point four, four, five.
Okay, I, I have my starting number wrong. That's where, that's what threw me off. Thank you, Kevin.
You're welcome.
So when we bulldoze these or what do we do with them? Who's responsible for mowing these and keeping the upkeep of the outside of the buildings?
Go ahead, Judy.
Oh.
The development department, we hire, um, someone to take care of them while they're sitting i- in city ownership. So, and we do use that, um, what we pay them comes out of the grant funds.
Okay, so that's part of that. Okay. Um, and I assume we're not, they come off the tax rolls as soon as we purchase them, correct? Yeah, I figured as much. All right, when, when are these going to start becoming available to be sold back to the public? Because I've had people reach out to me wanting to buy these lots and I've, I've referred them to the city. So I, I know there's interest in these lots currently.
We've gotta time that, um, really, I mean, we've gotta be careful in the way that we time it because if we sell it now, then the proceeds go back and we have to spend that money. So if we wait until the grant is essentially completed in September of twenty-six, then that money doesn't have to be spent or go back to the federal government. That's the way that the grant works.
We're pulling all these lots off of the tax rolls and not allowing any new building into, into the lots until potentially September of next year.
We could choose to do it differently, but right now what we're doing, once we get those, we keep them mowed, um, we have a surveyor go out there and actually mark all of the property lines so that we know when we get ready to sell these. The next person that purchases them is going to know exactly where their property lines are. Um, for a project like this one, it's a larger lot, there's a possibility that we would maybe subdivide the property and create more than just one lot. So at that point we would do that. So they're not just, not just sitting there. Some of them are, but not all of them are just sitting there. Um, there's, uh, one, I can't even remember the address that we did have to consolidate the lots together because they were two twenty-two foot wide lots versus a forty-four foot wide lot so that you could actually build on it. So there's a lot of what we're doing to prepare these for sale.
So my, my concern is, and back to our discussion earlier, we're about to dump one point four million dollars into this market and then we're gonna sit on these lots for over a year. And I don't know if that's the appropriate response to do this. Now, I'm in favor of, you know, condemned houses about ready to fall down, nobody else wants them. Yeah, I, I'm on board with cleaning them up and using this money, but we're starting to get outside of, I mean, look, looking from the outset of this house, it, I mean, it's a fifty, sixty thousand dollar house. It's a pretty reasonable house that could be sold on the open market. And, and I, I, I wanna stay within the bounds of what we originally, you know, talked about, you know, problem houses.
You raised the issue, why do we have to hang on to these for another year? I mean, I, I'd say get rid of them. I mean, let's get the thing going.
You don't have to, you don't have to hang on to them, but any of the proceeds that we happen to get back, go back into the grant and we have to get it spent by September of twenty-six. So the more money we make off of these sales, then the more we have to end up spending. So we were trying to just be focused on getting the properties purchased prior to putting them on the market to sell. Now, if you want us to do something different, we can do that, but now instead of having one point two million to spend, we're gonna have one point three million to spend by September of twenty-six.
So the other, the other relevant.
It doesn't make any sense.
Well, hold on, hold on, it does make sense. Because if we sell them in October of twenty twenty-six, all the revenue that we gain from whatever, whatever that amount is, goes into a fund at the city to continue this process, rather than going back to the federal government. That's the, that's the fund.
Creates a revolving loan.
So it's about money.
Yeah, the other thing too, Brad, I just, just wanna make a little clarification. If you talk about taking it off the tax rolls, I'll bet you none of these are being, their taxes are not being paid on any of them.
Probably not.
So they may not be on the tax rolls, but we're not getting any money for taxes. So I mean, it's, it's kinda doesn't make any difference in my.
But if a private owner were to buy it, then it wouldn't be on the tax rolls.
Bill, go ahead, Pete.
And I, I understand your point too, Brad, but the problem is a private owner, I do not believe will buy these properties because there are too many hurdles to cross in order to get a clear title in order to buy them. The city is utilizing its resources with Mr. Trudinsky and Mr. Peterson to obtain a clear, clean title so that they can be purchased. The city is either demolitioning or bringing a resource in to clean these out. So that they are able to be purchased. So that's the part I think we're overlooking here. We're doing a lot of legwork in this process in order to get them sellable.
And I concede you may be right, but the problem is, is we're not even taking three months, six months to find out, you know what I mean? Put it on the market, see what happens. You might be right.
As we've said, time is of the essence here. We, unfortunately, we don't have three or six months, you know, because we received this grant and we have to utilize this grant. If we kick this can down the road, Mr. Ricker, we send the government, we send the federal government back their money. I would rather, I, we send the federal government back their money. I would rather us have command and control of that money. I think we can do a better job of, for our community of spending this money than sending that back down to the, back to the federal government. That's my opinion.
So, hold on just a second. So let's make point of clarification, Matt. So one of the whole reasons we do these kind of things in a public process is so the public is aware of what we're doing, right? Attorneys, right?
Correct.
Okay, okay. So, and, and this particular property has a PR, right?
There's four owners, three of the owners are living, the fourth owner is deceased, so now as her son was appointed PR.
Right, so there's a PR, so that's the person who in essence controls the estate of this piece of, or this piece property.
Correct, a portion of it, yes.
Okay, okay. So we're here in this public process. So the city offers, I forget with this one, whatever the number of dollars is.
Sixty.
Sixty thousand for this piece of property, right?
Correct.
Okay, now, this is all likely gonna be in the paper tomorrow. So if somebody, or, excuse me, Thursday, um, so if somebody walks up to the personal representative of this piece of property and says, I'll give you sixty-five thousand dollars, that personal representative could accept that.
Correct. We do not have a, a binding agreement at this point with the city.
Right.
There's been discussions, but nothing's been signed and, and finalized.
Right, so until that PR, personal representative accepts the bid from the city, as the case may be, or some other bid, this piece of property would technically be on the market, is that correct?
Correct. And we actually have four people that have to sign the purchase agreement, so it will probably take longer than that.
Right.
So, but yes.
Okay, okay. So that's why we.
Signed by all four owners and you, we don't have a binding.
So that's why we do things in the public process. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Ricker, you had a comment?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, if I'm, I think I understood this correctly, that now we have a personal representative, so part of the encumbrance of putting this on the market has been resolved. Because now we have one person that can act as representative to sell the property.
Yeah, I think there's one, one of, one of the heirs, right?
One of the four.
I mean, there's four, there's four people in the property.
Correct, there's four, so they're, each of the heir, or each of the original heirs own an undivided quarter interest in the property. Only one of those original heirs is deceased, so, um, that person is, has an estate, the other three are remaining. Um, however, I will say, I think, um, the, the, the part of the estate, the reason why the estate was, was essentially set up was for this purpose with the idea that I think some of the grant funds could help pay for those costs. Because what the decedent's estate is going to receive from the sale alone would not be, it wouldn't have been worth filing for the estate, if that makes sense.
So there is no personal representative for the estate, there's three individual people plus a deceased member.
Correct. Th- though, there, there is a personal representative for the estate. That estate was opened with the idea that it was going to present it to the city to, to sell the, to purchase the property.
Well, does the personal representative really care who buys it? I mean, if he's, if he's appointed or she is appointed as a personal representative, then that person can sell the property to anyone, correct?
Well, yeah, there's, but there's still, all four, all four parties would have to sign the purchase agreement. And I think that goes back to, I guess, what Mary Keller was saying. I suppose if in the next week or so, if this is approved and in the next week or so before the agreement's signed, someone approaches the, the four owners and says, hey, I'll buy it for X amount of dollars, I suppose, then we can move forward in that direction.
So it would seem like to me that this is the first time this property's actually had a personal representative that could actually facilitate a sale.
That's correct, but I think had this process not taken place, I don't think a personal representative ever would have been appointed and this property's gonna sit vacant again for.
And I understand that, Matt, but a personal representative has been appointed.
Correct.
So we have a different circumstance now. We have a personal representative that can act for the sale of the property, if I'm understanding correctly.
That is correct.
So given that, why don't we let the market take its, take, take, let the market work here and let somebody buy it? I mean, if the city's gonna offer him sixty thousand dollars and I come over and offer him fifty-five, they're darn sure not gonna take my fifty-five. Well, I don't think they will, maybe they will, probably won't. I, I, the circumstances aren't the same here now. We have a personal representative that can handle the state, the sale of the estate. And the, the property is a mess. I drove by it the other day. The, the house is probably, probably repairable. I mean, it looked like a respectable house, probably needs some work, but there's a lot of junk that needs to be cleaned up. But. I, I don't know, that's my thoughts.
So is, is the plan with this property to try and rehab it and?
What, what we've talked about is our, in, in terms of our small group is that the lot is big enough and the house is mostly to the south end of it, that we believe we can subdivide the lot and get more usable housing units out of this particular parcel.
So the city isn't the business of flipping houses?
We're not flipping anything.
Of course.
We're making one lot. And then selling it.
Wouldn't you normally have to improve it to flip it? So, anyway, any other questions or comments? Rod, go ahead.
The grant money, we can keep the house. I thought we had to have them all tore down. We're not, we don't have to tear them down, they can stay up.
It, it, the grant, the purpose of the grant is to, um, turn vacant dilapidated properties back into usable housing. So that could either be by clearing the lot or it could be by, um, basically, I, I don't wanna say gutting the property, but you know, we, we could, technically the city could hire a contractor, uh, to, to gut a property. And those, uh, those expenses would be reimbursable through the grant.
What we had talked about doing in the initial phases of this. grant, Rod, since you guys weren't, weren't here at that time, was that, um, sometimes you'll have a home that's got, um, say, a, a serious foundation problem, and the expense of repairing the foundation is such that it's a contractor's not gonna undertake that. But if you had one of those where the home was otherwise fine, then we could use the grant funds to repair that foundation and then sell it as is.
Is that not house flipping?
I don't know. Is repairing a foundation making it better?
Yes.
Maybe so.
So the, the city is in the business of house flipping. That, that, that's why I struggle with this, because that's a, that's a real market that people are in, and I don't want to take that away.
But it's only, but it's only for houses that no one would otherwise undertake that.
How do we know?
Because they've sat for years.
For house flipping. You cannot use the grant for house flipping. We cannot purchase a home, go in and fix it up, and then sell it. We can prepare it for someone else to purchase, and then they can fix it up and sell it. So we can buy the house, like this one, for example. Say it's structurally fine. We can prepare it for someone else to start. So we can go in and we can possibly put some, some, um, two, some, I don't know, two by four or something to, to block the door. We can, we can get it to where it's gonna be in a shape so that we can put it on the market and sell it, so that somebody that is a house flipper or that wants to own it for themselves can come in, buy it, and do it. We can prepare it for them to get ready to do something. We cannot flip the house. We cannot go in, and there's some, some things that we can do, but we can essentially board it up, essentially board it up, put it on the market and sell it.
Well, we're gonna sit on it for a year before we put it on the market.
We don't have to. Again, we can do that. But whatever income we take in now goes back to the federal government at the end of the year, if we don't have it spent. If we wait and keep it until the grant is over, then that fund is ours. Whatever we make on the property would come back to the city so that we can use like a revolving fund to keep this program going.
Currently, we've used fifty five to sixty thousand dollars a year in the building department to basically tear down dilapidated homes. This could take the place of that for a number of years if we create this fund. Instead of using taxpayer money in that fund, we could replenish that with these monies for a long time, saving that fifty or sixty thousand property tax, or city property taxes to use in a different way.
And I agree with the, the concept when we're buying, you know, houses that are, nobody else wants, falling down, we just go up and pull those. I, I understand that, but this, that's not disagreement. This is something different.
The other thing to remember too, Bill's time that he takes on any, any home, trying to get clear title, trying to go jump through all the hoops, any of that time, if we do not purchase that house, that time is not refundable. So the amount of time that he has put into any of these that you see before you, if we do not ultimately end up purchasing that, that time is not refundable by the grant. So we have essentially, he's put in a ton of time, and any of my time, Kevin's time, anybody's time that's associated with that piece of property is not refundable if we do not end up securing that property.
Thanks, Judy. Nick?
Thank you. I, uh, I've been listening to a lot of conversation going on around the table. Um, I, I think the previous house, this house and the next one coming up are perfect examples of what we need to use this money for. This, look at how much time we're wasting here just talking about it, you know? Honestly, houses on the north side, let's be real, they, they don't go, they're not what people want to buy to rent out. There's landlords out there that'll tell you that they don't buy houses on the north side. And I can tell you that I get tired of looking at places like this, driving home, and we have a, a way to speedline this process, to clean up the community and make it better. Um, regardless of, you know, if it goes off the tax rule for a year, that's money that we don't have to spend for bill and all the, you know, if, if they have overgrown weeds, who's gonna take care of it? The city's gonna go mow it? Where's that gonna, that money gonna come from? You know, I think there's, I, I, I agree with a lot of wasted expenses being spent on these properties. Now we're spending a extraordinary amount of time on just deciding on each one, whether we're gonna buy it or not. I think we should streamline that process a little bit. I, I'm glad that we do it on a case by case basis, because there are some that I don't agree with, but for the most part, wha- what do we all come, hear complaints about? You know, a lot of the dilapidated houses and the way the community looks, we have a pro, we have a way and a process that people have spent a lot of time on trying to fix that problem. We have an opportunity to solve a problem with housing, the way places look, neighbors having to look at these places. And, and here we are worried about, you know, just some silly things, I guess. I, I, I'm just ready to move on and, and, uh, I, I'm glad to see a lot of these properties getting cleaned up, so.
Okay, calling the question. Which item is? Item number seven is passed. Item number eight, public hearing. Uh, agreement for sale of real estate with Jennifer Gillian for property at six oh three South Maple, and authorize mayor to sign all necessary documents. Opening the public hearing. Do we have any comments on, anyone like to make a comment on six oh three South Maple? Please approach the stand and tell us who you are. Make your comment. It would appear that no one would like to make a comment regarding Maple Street.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Dye, second by Volz, close public hearing, calling the question and closing the public hearing, please. Okay. Uh, council will now consider approve the agreement for sale of real estate with Jennifer Gillian for property at six oh three South Maple, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. There would need to be a motion.
I move to approve the agreement for sale of real estate with Jennifer Gilliland for property at six oh three South Maple, and authorize the mayor to sign necessary documents.
Second.
Motion by McNew, second by Dye. Any discussion on this one? Questions? Mr. Peterson has left the room, so we can't grill him anymore. Rod?
Nope.
Calling the question on item number eight then. Item number eight is passed. Item number nine. This will be another public hearing. Approve the agreement for sale of real estate with Donald Snyder for property at two 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 West Fourth Street, and authorize the mayor to sign necessary documents. Opening the public hearing on two 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 zero West Fourth Street.
Mayor, City Council, um, I am Angelica Hobbs with Nebraska Realty. I am representing Donald, um, Snyder on the sale of this lot. It's a vacant residential lot here in North Lat. Um, I was requested by, uh, Mr. Trzinski to come to the hearing on behalf of my client. The lot has been for sale since September twenty eighth to the open public. I entered in, into the MLS that day, and, uh, it's been out there on Zillow, whatever IDX feed it goes to, uh, since that time. I have had, um, inquiries from a neighbor across the street that wanted to buy it. Um, there was an issue at the beginning with the lot not marked correctly in the county assessor's website. Um, so the neighbor actually brought it to my attention, and I did some investigating about it, talked to the city council, or not the city council, talked to the county assessor. They were not willing to fix their mistake until twenty twenty six. So I contacted a surveyor, and I think at that time, Bill might have called me, uh, to express interest in possibly the city council purchasing the lot. So I brought to his attention that there was an issue. Uh, talked to who purchased Ed's Edward surveyors, uh, contacted them, and somehow they were able to get the county assessor to fix their mistake. So the very next day, it was fixed on their website. Um, the neighbor called me again. I then found out that he was represented by another Realtor here in North Lat. So for about two or three weeks, we've been going back and forth about the purchase of that. There's never been any offers, there's just been interest. I did have another interested a couple buyers, but they wanted to use it for more of a commercial industrial reason. They wanted to put trailers or roll offs on it. Um, of course, with the residential lot in North Lat, you can't do that. You have to use it to build a residence. Um, so I have not received since September twenty eighth any, um, offers on this particular property. And so I went back to Bill and, uh, told him that, and he wrote up a purchase agreement. I presented it to my seller on Friday the seventeenth of this month, and he signed it, and I sent it back to Bill. That was on Friday. Um, and since then, I've had no other, um, interest or any offers from the public. So my seller really does want to get rid of this lot if it's in your interest to, to purchase it from him.
If we have anyone else who would like to make comments, please don't leave. We reserve the right to call you back, okay?
Move to close public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Volz, second by Flanders to close the public hearing. Calling the question on closing the public hearing, please. Public hearing is now closed. Council will now consider approve the agreement for sale of real estate with Donald Snyder for property at two 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 zero West Fourth Street, and authorize the mayor to sign necessary documents.
I move to approve the agreement for sale of real estate with Donald Snyder for property at two 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 zero West Fourth Street, and authorize the mayor to sign necessary documents.
Second. Motion by Volz, second by McNew. Okay, Bill, this definitely represents kind of an unusual one, so do you want to start, or do you want Judy to start?
I might defer to Judy. She can probably speak better to the, some of the issues with setbacks and things. She knows those a lot better off the top of her head.
Okay.
Good evening. So this property is a corner lot, so it abuts a street on, um, would be the north side and the west side, I believe, of the property. It's forty four foot wide. Um, the problem with a forty four foot wide lot on a corner lot is the increased setbacks. So if they, um, if somebody were to look at this property and try and, and build a house on it, there are possible ways of doing that. You have to jump through hoops to get there. Board of Adjustment would have to be, um, something that they would have to appeal to because of the increased setbacks from the streets. So you're looking at at least a fifteen foot setback on, um, the west street side, a five foot setback on the, um, side where the other, it abuts the other property. And so with that, you've already got twenty feet off of a forty four foot wide lot. So that makes very skinny house unless you were to appeal to the Board of Adjustment, look at, um, decreasing the setbacks. The other issue is the garage, which was the problem to begin with, um, the garage of the neighboring property. It appeared that that garage was actually built over the lot line for this lot. Um, I think a surveyor, as she had said, a surveyor had went out there, but there's still a little bit of a question of encroachment of that garage onto this lot. So if there is an encroachment, the other thing that would have to occur is we would either have to grant an easement to the neighboring property owner for that garage or shrink the size of the lot again, depending on what it would be. So in order to get a house of any size on there, there's a lot of steps that a new, um, buyer would have to jump through that if we purchase this property, we could jump through those hoops, have it all prepared for a new development. Is that what you're looking for?
Yes, and that, that summarizes why we felt like this property was worthwhile to bring to City Council. We felt like there were enough issues that the city could help to streamline the process to make it so that it would be more of a usable, buildable residential lot than what it is currently.
So the logic was this would clear the challenges and make it a develop, develop a lot, basically.
Correct.
Okay. Rod, go ahead.
Well, I drove by that last night and did some looking this morning. Is the owner of the property the one that has the house right next door for sale too?
Our Realtor friend is saying yes.
So if the garage is encroaching on the lot, why doesn't he just combine it all into one lot and problem solved? Why are we buying it?
Maybe his Realtor will build answer that question for us.
Originally, when he had his house, which is at twenty two twelve, uh, West Fourth Street, he had just a small lot, just about the size we're talking about with this vacant lot. Um, he purchased the lot adjacent to it to the west, and I'm not sure exactly when that ha- happened. I don't have that notes with me. And he combined that into a double lot. He didn't own the corner lot yet. Sometime later, he purchased the one next to it. The reason being is because he wanted to park his camper, his friend's camper. He wants to move. He's an elderly, sick gentleman, and he, this had already been replatted how many years ago. He's not in any capability of wanting to do that again. At the first listing, we had these all together combined, and he just felt like it was in his best interest to try to get rid of the lot. So then, because what's happening is, is if he's gonna have a private resident by his residence, and they're going to have a loan on it, potentially, if you have a FHA loan or even a conventional loan, bankers will not loan on the whole entire amount, because we're looking at almost three lots right there. They're only gonna loan on his particular house and where the garage sits, so. But no, we have not had a surveyor come out and mark the lots. We've only had, um, the, we called it eight one one dig, and the city came out and did theirs, found the water main. Um, of course, the gas, you know, all of that's already been marked over there, but the four corners have not been marked by a survey.
So he'd actually, with the corner lot, he actually has three lots?
Correct. Well, his house sits on a double lot, and it's been platted together.
Okay.
So, if that makes sense.
So, so why doesn't he just combine that third lot into one big area and wouldn't that clear up all those problems?
Yeah, he just doesn't want to have to deal with it. He wants somebody else to.
He wants us to.
Well, or anybody. He's open to any buyer. He just thought if the city could do this, then it would make more sense. And then where, you know, the issue ran into the neighbor across the street, he just doesn't want to have to deal with it. He wanted to purchase it just to park, like I said, a roll off or some sort of, you know, eighteen wheeler truck on it. And I'm like, you can't do that. So, here we are.
Hey, Ed, go ahead.
Sold the property about five or six blocks from this one. Was on the market for a year. It had no setback problems at all. It's sewer and water, concrete street. I sold it for nine thousand dollars cash and six thousand dollars for a donation. So the donation's probably gonna give me a twenty five percent discount on my taxes. So in essence, I got about maybe twelve thousand dollars out of that lot. And, and we wanted to spend seventeen thousand dollars for a lot that has a lot of issues. I'm not sure that this makes any sense. My lot was on the market for a year. I never, had several offers. I told them what I wanted for it, and nobody wanted to buy it. There's nice homes around it. So, here, it seems to me like we're offering more than what, what the value of the property is.
And there's another issue too. What happens when everybody in town that owns a lot realizes the city's paying top dollars for every lot that?
That's forty four foot wide.
See what I'm saying?
Yep.
Well, th- that exact is the reason why the council has to decide whether it accepts these. I mean, the prices that are put in front of you guys are because what the person is asking. We really don't negotiate with them. So, Ed, go ahead. You spoke, is that gonna go ahead? So, I'm sorry, Ed. Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Have a good evening. Nick, go ahead.
Um, how, does this lot have water and sewer to it?
It does.
How big of a house, after we get everything fixed, um, as far as like zoning and everything, how big of a house can be put on that property?
Um, I would say you can probably get, um, let's see, it's forty four foot wide. You could probably go, you could probably get about a thirty foot wide house reasonably. Um, I'm not sure how long the lot is. Is it a hundred? I, I don't know. I don't know how long it is. But you could probably get a thirty by.
Thirty by seventy?
Yeah, probably.
How, I'm just trying to picture that. I know it's a long, narrow lot, but it is on the corner, but does it look like it could be usable for a decent property, or does it make sense to join the property next to it?
That's kind of a tough question. Um, I think it would make sense for a smaller house. Um, you know, maybe not your three bedroom, two car attached garage, you know, that sort of thing. I could see it as being a starter home. Um, more of a maybe two bedroom, one bath type structure. Um, does it make sense to combine it to his lot? Well, it depends on what you're doing. Um, me personally, I would love to have it combined to my lot because I got a bigger lot, but now you're paying more taxes, you're gonna have to sell it for more. So it just really, I mean, it just really depends on what he wants to do. Obviously, in his situation from the reliter. He doesn't want that additional burden on there to try and sell it because now he's gonna have to try and sell the house with. That much space for a larger dollar amount. He's probably not gonna get that just for the extra space.
I this is probably one that I don't like because it is a vacant lot and it is for sale. I would I would recommend waiting to see if that house next to it sells. And then if they don't buy the lot with that house when it sells, then come back and look at it again, maybe in the future.
The one problem with vacant lots like this, just like the reliter said, um, there are people calling my office constantly. This is a vacant lot in a residential neighborhood. I want to park my semi truck there. This is a vacant lot in a residential neighborhood. I want to park. I want to rent it out to store campers. Happens all the time. Just something to think about.
Thank you. Ryan?
So there's there's no dilapidated buildings on this property. Is that?
It's vacant.
Fake it.
As far as we can tell, unless the garage is overhanging, but yes, it's vacant.
I guess to to me, with. Councilwoman McNew, I guess I I kind of haven't. I'm having a hard time with this one where it is already vacant. It's already, there's no dilapidated buildings on this on this property. And to me, that's where that grant should be applied to. Um, not to just vacant properties. It kind of feels like we're just bailing somebody out. That's that's my my opinion, so.
Other questions or comments?
Just real quick, Judy, uh, this has not been on the property resolution. Mr. Snyder is maintaining this property as he should be, so it's not an eyesore anywhere.
Yep, to my knowledge, there's no written documentation that he is not.
Other questions or comments? Seeing done, calling the question on this one. Jim, your click didn't go.
Oh, it didn't click.
And then you're gonna have to, okay, it looks like we're not buying this one. This motion fails. Okay, moving on to number ten, we have the final public hearing of the evening. Approve the agreement for sale or of real estate with C J K Holdings LLC for property at ten fifteen North Brian. And authorize the mayor to sign unnecessary documents. Opening the public hearing on this subject. If you'd like to make a comment on this, please approach microphone. Tell us who you are and where you live, please.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Chad Clewine and my wife, Jen Clewine. We live at uh two oh two South Miloney Drive. Um, we've uh purchased this property about uh six years ago now. And we rented to a gentleman and that's family. Everything was going good. He paid rent on time. Apparently, they got a divorce or whatever, and I'm assuming that the pictures ain't doing the justice because you guys probably haven't seen the inside. Um, I'm assuming that there's a water spigot between the house and the garage, and I think when he mowed the lawn or something or kids hit it or something, but it broke. And I think that there have been water leaking underneath my crawl space there for a year and a half. And now, and this house is almost a hundred years old. So obviously, the boy that did it back in the day, not very good at foundations and not proper floor choices. And it's all now collapsed and coming in foundations all just cracked everywhere. And really not even the proper way to do it. All the choices are on the half of the house are gone. Um, I can't even set a front door because it's settled so much. Um, the front door is open. If you guys want to go look at it, you're more than willing to. Careful, you'll fall through. Um. But yeah, the I mean, there has an out uh outbuilding out back too. That's a closet that the. The roof has holes and stuff all over it. So I mean, that ain't nothing. But um, the garage, I mean, that's probably the. Only thing about that property, really, I mean, and it's a piece of crap too. So that's why we're here and I've been doing construction for almost thirty years. I've done a lot. We've flipped a lot of houses. And I I know when a bad property comes a bad property, else I wouldn't be here today. And this is this is bad. And uh, yeah, it's just a stressful project. We don't want to do it no more. I mean, it's just a it's it's a mess and. Yeah, anyways.
We have it to the point where we get it and it's just got to where. The foundation's bad, the trusses are bad, the roof's bad, the windows are bad, it's falling in. It's just, it's not habitable.
Okay, we reserve the right to call you back and ask you questions.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make a comment in public hearing? On ten fifteen North Brian.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion by McNew, second by Volz to close public hearing, calling the question and closing the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. Council will now consider approve the agreement for sale of real estate with C J K Holdings LLC for property at ten fifteen North Brian. And authorize the mayor to sign necessary documents.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the agreement for sale of real estate with C J K Holdings LLC. For the property at ten fifteen North Bryant and authorize the mayor to sign necessary documents.
Second.
Motion by Volz, second by Di. I'm sure there's some questions about this one. Nick?
Thank you. Chad, have you uh have you talked to realtors or anything like that to see about selling the property?
Oh, my wife does all that. There you go.
Okay.
Um, we haven't had realtors come over. We tried to do it like Fisbo. Um, and we had about four people tell us that we needed to burn it to the ground.
We actually really had people that are in rental businesses, huge in North Flat. I invited them over and says, come take a look at this. What do you think? And they just turned and walked away. I mean, it's that bad, guys. So, I mean.
How how long have you owned it?
Six years.
Six years? Sorry, I don't know if you mentioned that earlier.
Yep, six years and they rented it for a year and I've been kicking cans around it for a year.
No, they they were out in September last year.
Okay, yeah.
If you don't mind me asking, what did you pay for it six years ago?
I can't remember.
About like fifty-five thousand.
Fifty-five, okay. That's all.
It was at a time when the market was.
Pre-COVID, yeah. Thank you.
Pete, Ken, while you're up there, you might want to just.
Just hang on.
If the city council does not approve this, what does this property look like going forward?
To be honest, I gotta, we gotta figure out the money situation and and and.
We don't have the time.
We haven't talked about that yet either because.
We have, we don't have the time or. Like, I mean, it's probably a hundred and twenty thousand to remodel. If we were to.
And that's my and that's without labor too, I mean.
That would be with labor.
Okay, with labor, geez.
Maybe even more.
Yeah.
So safe to say it would sit in this state for the foreseeable future? Okay, thank you.
And it's a it's a big lot too. If somebody wanted to like. Put a shop up or whatever there are too, but yeah.
Well, if if the city buys it with this grant, it has to be rebuilt back to a home. That's part of the stipulations of the grant. Other questions or comments?
I I looked this up earlier, but I can't remember. I didn't bring them my notes with me. What's the just the land value of this property?
Uh, just the land value is just shy of eleven thousand, I believe.
Okay. Because I know that the the whole value was more than this fifty-eight thousand, not much more, was it?
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine, thank you.
In in change.
Okay.
There's some additional um assessment on the county's records for some of the outbuildings that Mr. Clewine mentioned.
Okay.
So there's.
Any other questions or comments? Go ahead, Brad.
I I relate to you guys' situation. I have I have some rentals that I've I've fixed up and whatnot. Luckily, I've had this exact situation, but you know, you always think about it when you got a renter in there and whatnot. So I totally feel where you guys are coming from. I I really do because I. I I played this scenario in my brain in my own, you know, life. Um, so I'm I'm trying to understand how you came up with the number of fifty-eight thousand. I assume that was your guys' number, right? How did you get to that? Because because in your own words, it seems like this this is pretty much a done deal here.
That's kind of uh what we came to to like be able to break even, to be able to walk away. Um, we're not making any money. I guess it's just the grant opportunity was proposed and it's not something we're making money off of, just kind of. Getting out from under.
Okay, go ahead, Nick. I have one last question, sorry. Uh, with the with the water issues that you had mentioned prior, was there any insurance that was collected or any claim or anything like that made?
There's a long story behind that too, because I deal with insurance companies all the time.
Yeah.
And the insurance company that we have, I know that.
They told us not to do it.
They told us not to make a water claim.
Okay.
If you make a water claim with the di- different insurance companies, they will pretty much red flag you and drop you with that stuff.
Okay.
With the water claim.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions or comments? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Calling the question, I have number ten. Sorry, we have to decide whether the it's appropriate for the mayor to vote on this one or not, so.
So I I feel as though this is more of um a type of. Action by the city council that appropriates money, payment of money. So I do feel like it requires a majority of all the elected members of the city council. So since we are not at a majority with the four to two vote, um, it would be appropriate for the mayor to vote under these circumstances.
What will it likely cost to tear this house down if we have to tear it down? Kevin?
Our average is seven thousand dollars right now. Our lowest bid has been forty-seven hundred and fifty dollars. That's we've accepted and our highest on one of the six properties demo was fourteen thousand, four hundred.
Okay. Mr. Clewine? And Mrs. Clewine, sorry. You said you were in construction for thirty years. And refresh my memory, what do you think it would take to bring this house back to sellable? From a cost perspective, realistically?
Oh, geez. We kind of put a budget number together ourselves and and we're thinking it probably cost us about. With that, with my labor on with, I mean, just me doing it, just material and stuff like that, we're close to sixty-seven thousand dollars. Just to, I mean.
And that's probably a year and a half project.
Yeah, that's not no high end stuff either, you know, that's rental property stuff, I guess.
Okay. What would it take to bring it? To be structurally sound to where someone else could sell it, would you guess? Or you could sell it to somebody who was interested in rehabbing it?
You know, I would, I know foundation problems and stuff like that. I mean, you're gonna have to, half of the house, you're gonna have to. And you can't even get underneath there, so well, it's pretty much tore apart now. You could, it's just the choices. All got to come up and report new footing down in there. I mean, I really don't know a whole lot about foundations of doing that. I just build. So I really couldn't tell you the how much it would cost to to jack up half the house and 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 put a foundation in there to. And put floor choices back in there and start going back together.
And do you want to jack up a hundred year old house with bad floor choices?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. I vote in favor.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, moving on to number eleven. Adopt the resolution approving claims and authorizing the issuance of one warrant to Van Kirk Brothers. Contracting in the amount of one hundred eighty-one thousand, four hundred dollars and twenty-nine cents. One warrant to Level LLC in the amount of two hundred, two thousand dollars, seven twenty-one dot seven one cents. And two warrants to Paulson in the amounts of four hundred thirteen thousand, fifty-six dollars, sixty-nine cents. And one hundred and forty-one thousand, eight hundred seventy-nine dollars and six cents to pay approved claims referring to and incorporating the terms and conditions of ordinance number three, eight, seven, four. Relating to warrant financing.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the resolution authorizing the issuance of four warrants as presented in the materials.
Second.
Motion by Flanders, second by Nistley. Calling the question on the warrants. Warrants are, excuse me, yeah, warrants are paid. Number twelve, approve the claims.
I move to approve the claims.
Second.
Motion by Volz, second by. McNew, calling the question and approving the claims. Claims are approved. Public agenda request. We respect our city employees and request that any complaints or criticisms of employees not be aired in a public meeting. Concerns about employees should be brought to the attention of the city administrator or the mayor. Individuals in violation will be declared out of order. Anyone has any uh future agenda items they'd like to request, please approach the microphone and let us know what your thoughts are. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
In the absence of. Councilman Riker, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Volz, second by Flanders, calling the question on adjournment. Thank you, everyone. We'll see you in the first week in November.